I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shinowitz, Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Huth.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Whalen, Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Here.
First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Additions or corrections? None, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, in additions to the agenda, actually, they're going to request a deletion from the agenda tonight, which would be Item C under the Committee of the Hall report. That's an ordinance vacating a portion of Wright Street adjacent to Dunbar Court. That requires a minimum of six council members to approve that, and as you see, we only have five, so if there is any objection, we'll kick this over to the next council meeting. Okay? Any other additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay. Petitions and communications? If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll pick up one of these white cards at the back of the room and bring it to myself or the clerk, you'll have a chance to be so. First is Ellen Siffen, 711 West Iowa, on the demolition of a house to build parking at 806 West Iowa.
Thanks. I know this wasn't part of your scheduled meeting tonight, but Mickey Scheineman spoke to me last Friday and explained that the city arborist had been by and informed her that the sorority on Lincoln Avenue was going to demolish the property at 806 West Iowa, which is in her backyard, basically, I mean, her backyard abouts it, to build a parking lot, and she asked me, what can I do? So, I thought about it, and we're all a pretty close neighborhood, so that's why I'm here talking to you. And Mickey's at home with the flu verging on pneumonia, so she can't come herself. And I actually didn't live in Urbana when this property was zoned R7, which I understand is a designation allowing it to be a rooming house, but I really have a hard time believing that it was the intention of the city officials at that time for a rooming house zoning to turn into tear a house down and build a parking lot in a residential neighborhood. So, I don't really feel that allowing that kind of use addresses the primary use and the spirit of the R7 zoning. The other thing is that Mickey and her husband have lived in their same home for 40 years, and now they're going to have a parking lot with buzzing commercial lights and coming and going of cars at all hours, basically, in their small backyard. And I really believe that's unfair and really undemocratic, and I also believe that they should have the reasonable use and enjoyment of their property, too. And the other problem that I see with this is, as I understand it, the parking lot would have an entrance and exit onto Iowa Street, and this property sits in the middle between Lincoln and Bucie. And this would vastly increase traffic on Iowa Street and also on Bucie, and I don't know if y'all are very familiar with it, but within one house of this tear down for to build the proposed parking lot and through across Bucie Avenue, there are the following age children. In the house, one house away from them across Bucie Avenue, there's a little girl who's seven and a baby who is three and a half months old. And next door to them lives Lisa and Howie with their little girl who's four and a half. Directly across the street lives a husband and his wife with their children. Annie June is five, Will is two and a half, and the new baby is five months. Next to them live a family with a six-month-old baby, and further down the street, we have other little children. And they play outside, they're on the street, not by choice, but when they cross the street with their parents and so on. The kids ride their bicycles, and I think that it would be an unsafe thing to increase the traffic on these streets from a standpoint of the children themselves. And the last point I would make is that I can't say if it was last year or the year before, a neighborhouse asked to rezone a double lot on which they also tore down a property, and there were a lot of people in the neighborhood, about 300, who were not happy about it, and y'all chose not to give them the right to build the parking lot. And this parking lot sits directly, would sit directly across the street from that property that the neighborhouse wished to build a parking lot on. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it from your standpoint, but if so, we would all really appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
Okay, thank you. Next is Linda Lorenz of 409 West High on the parking lot at 806 Iowa.
I'm also opposed to it and would hope that there's something that can be done about it. I understand a number of trees are going to be cut down. I'm concerned about the traffic, but most of all, every one of those lots, houses which turns into a parking lot or a bunch of kids that aren't following ordinances and stuff decreases the value of properties around it, and every bit of it takes away from what we love about our neighborhood, and I don't see that anybody is helping us with it. It just gets worse and worse and worse. We have four beautiful old houses torn down by the Presbyterian Church, and there's just too many lots and too much stuff going down like that, and nobody's stopping it. And I agree with Ellen, surely, the intention of R7 is not to replace a house or something where somebody lives with a parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Next is Susan Hopkins, 107 West Mumford, on ethics.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Susan Hopkins. One of my hobbies is genealogy. One of the things I've learned in doing this is to ask whether a piece of information in front of me makes sense. Does it fit with human behavior, for example, and what is the preponderance of evidence for conclusion when there are conflicting facts? When I was reading back in April about Councilman Otto's desire to have a proposed new ward map fit his home purchase so that he could live across from Lille School and remain a council member, some things did not fit. Milton Otto is supposed to represent Ward 7, that's the one I live in. He's listed in the phone directory as living on Fletcher, but according to the City of Urbana website, he now lives in apartment number 10 at 406 East Michigan in Ward 7. This is despite the fact that quite a few months ago, he purchased, as I think the News Gazette called it, "The House of His Dreams" across from Lille School at Cedar in Oregon, which is decidedly not in Ward 7. City council members don't make much money for their service. I ask myself, if I were a city council member, would I go to the extent of paying rent on an apartment as well as on a mortgage on my new home in order to stay on the council? Now, I know that legally, one can maintain two addresses and call only one your residence for purposes of voting and representing a district. Being curious and needing the exercise, I thought I would walk on over to 406 East Michigan to see whether there was any sign that Milton Otto actually lived there. Here's what I found in Maine on several other trips there, including one today. If Milton Otto actually lived in apartment 10, he's never bothered to put his name on the door or even the mailbox, which I believe you're supposed to do in order to receive mail in an apartment box. I'm a landlord, and the postal carriers ask me to make sure that I have names of tenants on mailboxes. Maybe this isn't a hard and fast rule. I've dropped by at a variety of times, and no one has ever answered the door, nor has there been any noise coming from the apartment. I never see a light on after dark. Today, I knocked on the door of the apartment facing number 10 because I could hear that someone was home. When a young man answered, I asked if he knew whether anyone lived in apartment 10. His response was that he had lived there for two months and had neither seen or heard any sign that anyone lived in apartment 10. I then asked him if he knew that the person who was supposed to live right across from him was an Urbana city council member. He looked at me in disbelief and then said, "If a city council member really lived here, he would have done something about the condition of this building." I brought my camera with me on my visit to 406 East Michigan today to show that what I had noticed on previous visits regarding the condition of the public areas of the building in which Milton claims to live. There are multiple holes in the wallboard in the hallways. A part of the original stair railing is propped against a wall on a landing and has been replaced by unfinished two-by-fours with no spindles to keep a child from falling through. And I have some photographs to share with you all. There's one copy to pass around with color, and the other is a black and white.
Thank you.
Appearances regarding ethics and possible conflicts of interest have lately been in the news as being very important to Mr. Otto and Mr. Satterthwaite. I would say that appearances are that Mr. Otto actually is living in his dream house across from Lille School and not at 406 Michigan Avenue. Appearances are that he is not putting much effort into representing the citizens of Ward 7, in particular, those who are his immediate neighbors, the ones in the same building as he supposedly lives in. He hasn't even bothered to introduce himself to his immediate neighbors, people who, it would seem, might need help getting some maintenance from their landlord. Mr. Otto, I think you've been living in what might be viewed as a conflict of interest for some time now. You were supposed to be residing in Ward 7 where I live, but certainly appears that you're really living in Ward 5. It appears, and appearances matter, as you pointed out, that you are now trying to force out the current councilperson from Ward 5 so that you can correct your own behavior and be appointed to replace her. Instead, by your overall behavior, you merely demonstrated that you really aren't fit to be a councilperson from any part of Urbana. And given your stated views on the appearance of councilperson ethics, Mayor Satterthwaite, I think you're certainly not justified in appointing Mr. Otto to Ward 5 in any case. Mr. Otto, I really think you ought to resign. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Lisa Truel, 714 West Iowa, on the demolition of the house and parking lot at 807 West Iowa.
Good evening. May I speak for Mickey Scheineman first? Is that all right, Mayor Satterthwaite, since she's ill? And I have a prepared written statement that she sent me, that she wanted me to read.
Okay, so you want to present her written statement and then have a statement of yourself?
Yeah, if that's okay. Okay. This is from Mickey Scheineman, and she is ill tonight and on antibiotics, so she was unable to come. And she writes to me, "My husband, Morris Scheineman, and I have lived in our house at 907 South Bucie for 40 years. Our backyard abuts a student rental house at 806 West Iowa, which is slated to be demolished tomorrow. It is our understanding that the Alpha Chi Omega Sorority at 904 South Lincoln is the new owner and plans to build a parking lot to connect with the one they already have in back of their sorority. We only learned of these events late last week, and we're greatly distressed about the future of our pleasant house and surroundings. We would hope that the city council will deal with this issue as it affects the entire neighborhood. Students as a whole make good neighbors, and we can tell of instances where they have lent an enormously appreciated helping hand. Construction of a parking lot and planned cutting down of numerous trees will adversely change the character of our residential area. Its impact will be seen in at least four ways: increased noise, increased light pollution, traffic hazards, and pedestrian dangers, as well as aesthetic diminishment. We believe the City of Urbana, wonderful and enlightened as it is, will seriously renew efforts to examine zoning quality-of-life issues, and in particular, this proposed parking lot and its effect on our streets and the future. The current project needs examination, and we hope that when discussion occurs, Urbana will deal with it constructively, fairly, and sensibly, and soon, so as to prevent further degradation of what was once a true neighborhood. Please take action on this and broader issues in neighborhood preservation and enhancement. Thank you, Muriel," and her nickname is Mickey Scheineman."
Okay.
Do you want me to enter this?
Sure, if you've got a copy, it'll be fine.
Thank you.
Now, representing yourself?
Right. Okay. I'm going to read a statement that Liz Cardman, the co-coordinator of WUNA, my colleague with the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, had sent to the list, sir, in response to -- I don't need to say that the neighbors and the neighborhood as a whole is extremely upset about a house being torn down on a parking lot going up in its place. So, she said, "To those who think this is an isolated incident, I would say, no, it isn't. After working on behalf of West Urbana for nearly five years, I can say that one concern that unites neighbors from Florida to Maine, from Lincoln to Vine, is our love of the historic character and integrity of our residential neighborhood and its easy access to downtown and campus. Contrary to popular opinion, no, we are not elitist, no, we are not anti-student, no, we are not anti-development, but yes, we are pro-neighborhood. As we see historic houses razed for parking lots or allowed to deteriorate to benign neglect and then replaced with filing cabinets or other structures that are incompatible with our neighborhood, we do become concerned. The larger question is, when will the city and the city council realize this and aggressively support the retention of our neighborhood's integrity? Former Mayor Hyrum Paley was right when he recently posted to the WUNA list, sir, "I can assure you that when there are problems like this, they can be handled if the desire is there." Although Hyrum was referring to the police enforcement regarding party barns, the same applies towards protecting our neighborhood from the onslaught of deterioration and demolition. We have countless models from college towns within Illinois and elsewhere in the country providing solutions." And what I want to say is, I did speak to the housemother of the sorority that purchased the lot, and they assured us, and they do take beautiful care of their property, that they would create a beautiful parking lot, and I assured her that we understood that if there was such a beast as a beautiful parking lot, we were convinced that that sorority would build one. But that remains the whole question, is there such a thing as a beautiful parking lot? And beyond that is the safety question. With so many young children on this street, that is our main concern. And I think that what I have come here so many times beforehand and have said is, we are not against development or redevelopment. If they would have come and they were going to build an R7 structure on that lot, that would have been fine. It is tearing down houses to create parking lots. We don't consider this thoughtful redevelopment. And I think that it's some questions that I just want to leave you with is, what do we say to the young families that bought homes along the west side of Bucie? And I plead with you not to destroy a 100-year-old neighborhood, and most importantly, because we're all worried about finances, I don't need to remind you that a house being razed, replaced by a parking lot, brings in less tax revenue. Thank you very much.
Any other petitions or communications for members of the public? Maybe at this time, Ms. Tyler, did you want to give a little staff update if the council would indulge me in having Ms. Tyler give an update on the demolition permit that's been requested at 806 Iowa?
Really, there's two issues at hand here. One is the demolition request we received on the 28th last week to demolish the structure at 806 West Iowa. We do have a policy for a five-day waiting period, and that is to inform utilities and PACA and to work through the process. That fifth day, fifth working day expired today. We're prepared to issue the permit contingent on working out issues related to the shared access and make sure that the owner of the adjacent property at 808 West Iowa is protected in their access, and the demolition contractor assures us that he will be able to do the demolition such that that access will be protected. We also have city trees in the right of way that are protected from the demolition. So, they are following all the procedures on demolition, and no special additional permissions would be necessary. As far as the proposed use, and we have not received any specific plans for this, really, demolition permit has come in, but no parking lot plan. And indeed, until we were able to speak with the housemother, we did not know what the intended use was. Any zone, including the R7 zone, allows uses that are accessory to permitted uses in that zone to occur by right, and those accessory uses do include from time to time parking lots. So, it does appear that according to our zoning ordinance, an accessory parking lot to the permitted sorority house would be allowed. However, as I said, we have not yet received a parking plan, and we do have a lot of controls on parking plans that we will be looking at in this case. We will want to make sure that it is, in fact, an accessory parking lot, not a principal use, and it's accessory to that sorority that's adjacent to it. We want to make sure that there is adequate access, and that access does not infringe upon the shared access. We want to make sure that there's sufficient visibility for the traffic, safety. Setbacks are required on the order of 15 feet in the front or more and five feet on the side yards. In addition, because this parking area is in a residential area, there are landscape screening requirements even to the detail of arborist review and suggested species. Additionally, lighting impacts are controlled by the zoning ordinance such that no lighting shall impact adjacent residences. So, we will make sure, it does appear that, you know, it's not intended, when you look in a residential area, that there are going to be a lot of parking lots, but such that this is technically permitted, we will work hard to make sure that it's as least intrusive as possible, and we'll look for that plan whenever it's submitted. Again, have not received any plans and don't know what their schedule would be. Any questions?
Just a question on the accessory use issue, and that is, to make sure I understand correctly, the only, if they were to put in a parking lot, the only people who would be allowed to park there would be people who currently live at the Alpha Chi Omega house? Is that what the accessory use issue is?
Well, I think the use would have to be supportive of the sorority house, so if they had visitors, that would be accessory to the house.
Okay.
But if they were renting to, you know, other university students or, you know, using it as a principal use parking lot or parking spaces for rent in some fashion, I think that would be in violation of that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I've received a number of phone calls and emails about this in the last 24 hours or so, and one of the communications was an assertion that the zoning of 806 West Iowa is not, in fact, R7, and that therefore, it cannot be an accessory-use parking lot for Alpha Chi Omega. And I understand, Ms. Tyler, that you've been researching that. Could you just tell us about that? Because I think there are a lot of people in the audience who were part of that email conversation and are curious as well.
We did do some research today, we're planning staff, and the zoning on this lot dates back to 1991, where there were a lot of zoning changes in the downtown to campus area, and in fact, there were decisions made, Plan Commission recommendation, city council, mayor veto, and override of the veto that involved a number of omnibus ordinances, but we have been able to track down the final version of the overridden ordinance, and in fact, we have a sheet on each of these properties, and this is recorded as being at that time rezoned from R4 to R7. So, we have verified that the zoning is, in fact, R7 for 806 West Iowa.
Thank you. And what if we wanted to stop this, well, I would like to stop this parking lot from going in, what can we, as a city, do?
It's generally not advisable to change the rules after a request is made. I don't think that's something the city attorney would advise us to do, nor would staff. I think in this case, it's pretty clearly zoned R7. The demolition appears to be in order, and use of that particular lot as accessory to the principal use on the R7 lot is allowed in our zoning ordinance, and has been similar cases occurred throughout residential areas in Urbana. So, it would not be wise to single out this case and say, "We're not going to allow you to do this." I think the better approach would be to work hard to especially encourage the sorority to try to work a little better with their neighbors in communication and to make sure that this is a parking lot that fits in as well as it can with the neighborhood. And then, if we would like to look in the future for additional controls or additional review, then that's something certainly the city could do.
So, by additional review or changes, so that we could entertain a process that would make it more difficult to have a parking lot, for a residential lot to be turned into a parking lot? Is that right?
Yeah.
And that would take, the process would be to have a plan case for that, or?
This is all set out in the zoning ordinance, so any change would involve a text amendment and a hearing at the Plan Commission, and we certainly could do research and see what we would recommend at a staff level and what's been done in other communities. It's a kind of a new issue, but not new, so certainly, we can evaluate it.
Okay. Well, would that be, is that something that staff can initiate, or should we have a council, put that on the council agenda for next week to start that process?
That would be good. We always deal with different priorities and work plans, so.
Well, right, yeah.
Yeah, so to get council direction is always helpful.
Yeah. Well, if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and put that on for next week's agenda. That's that. Ms. Pat?
I have one more question.
Mm-hmm.
Well, first I want to say, I would like to see it on next week's agenda because I think that we've had, we had a lot of concern when this happened up on Green Street, when we lost several houses to a parking lot. Now, it's happening again. I think we really need to look at the whole notion that an entire city lot in the residential area can be converted into a parking lot. The fact that it's an accessory use to a principal use really is irrelevant in terms of its impact on surrounding properties. I was contacted yesterday by Mickey Scheineman and by her son, and she's going to have a parking lot in her backyard and is not at all pleased about that, which leads to my question regarding the lighting. I know that we have requirements for bushes to shield the light that comes from the headlights of a car so it doesn't shine right in a person's window. But Dr. Tyler, you said that one of the requirements, excuse me, one of the requirements is that the light, I forget the exact language used, but lighting can't negatively impact. There will be lighting in a parking lot, so how, what's your determination of what negatively impacts?
The words are something to the fact that it shall not shine into a residential property. And we have, from time to time, it doesn't provide any roomans or any standards for lighting, but we do from time to time get complaints about lighting on buildings and parking lots disturbing residents, and we go out and do a case-by-case review of what is the matter with that particular light, and we can enforce changing the standard, shielding it, changing the height, changing the light fixture that's in it. So, it's a very broad requirement in the zoning ordinance, and basically, we just work with the two property owners until there's satisfaction. But we don't have, we talked about trying to get more specific in the zoning ordinance, but the way it's currently written is protective of residential properties.
Thank you. It seems impossible to provide sufficient lighting in the parking lot that will afford some measure of safety for the people who are parking in the lot without negatively impacting an adjacent property because the light is going to, even if it doesn't shine as a beam into the eyes of a person sitting with the shade up, it makes the whole, makes rooms lighter even when shades or blinds are down, and drapes are drawn, and it also isn't terribly attractive to look at when one looks out one's window.
I think the operative concept is shining directly, and that's why we try to work with shielding. But you're right, it's hard to provide that security for an adjacent property and not increase the lighting at the residential. But I think what we try to do is keep it from shining directly, and if we can shield the sides of the light, make sure it's cast downward, perhaps lower the elevation which the light is, it can reduce it. And in this case, of course, there would be landscaping required as well.
One last question, is a fence required? Can a fence be required? Can a fence be required?
We have on occasion required both fencing and landscaping. This particular parking lot will require a landscape screen, but if we think that both would be beneficial, we can certainly strongly recommend that.
Thank you.
And Libby, on the, one of the, excuse me, one of the comments that was made earlier was that right across the street, the neighbor house, and this was, I can't remember what it, here two ago, had demolished the house, and with the intent of trying to get it rezoned so they could put in an accessory parking lot to the neighbor house. And so the difference here is that the residential lot is zoned differently in this case than it was right across the street for the neighbor house. Is that right?
That's correct. That lot is zoned R three, which does not permit fraternities within it, therefore does not permit accessory uses to fraternities. So the only way the neighbor house could use those lots for parking, parking accessory, even an expansion of their building, would be to rezone it to R seven. That's, that's what they did request.
Okay, so that's what the difference is in those two, that the zoning is different. Okay. Any other questions from council about this? Any petitions and communications from council members? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just a reminder, for those in the audience and those watching, tomorrow is the deadline for voter registration. The clerk's office closes at five o'clock at seventeen seventy-six East Washington in the Brookins Building, so tomorrow by five, people should make sure they've got their address updated if they've moved since the last time they voted, and haven't, and hadn't changed their registration address. And as I understand it, the kiosks for voter registration will be open until midnight on tomorrow, and the only people who are allowed to turn in voter registration forms after October fifth are those who are deputy registrars and have voter registration forms that were filled out on the fifth, and those must be turned in on the sixth. If anyone out here needs to update their registration, I do have extra forms, so just tell me. Thank you.
Anybody object to hearing from Mark Clark in Audience, Petitions and Communications? Okay, seeing no objections, Mark? I don't know if you heard about the, if you were here when we talked about the five-minute restriction, so you have five minutes.
It should be only two or three minutes.
All right, bless your heart.
Hi, my name is Mark Clark, and I'm living at seven fifteen West, seven fifteen West Washington, and I've actually lived in the Warna District for seventeen years. I've owned homes on Pennsylvania Avenue and Indiana, and my most recent home is on Washington. And since I've been in Champaign-Urbana, and living in Urbana, I've been, I guess, very disillusioned by the types of developments that have gone up. I work in civil engineering at the University of Illinois, and there's an area just east of the university on Main that, in walking to work for fifteen years or so, I've turned, I've seen turned from a fairly balanced residential area into an ice ore, that's all I can call it. And there are other areas of Champaign-Urbana like that. When I first came to Champaign-Urbana, I was involved in protesting the development of the Busey Mansion property, which unfortunately became the Campus Oaks Development. This was seventeen years ago. And I've, actually, over the intervening years, I've been involved with restoring homes and trying to get tenure at the University of Illinois, which I was successful at. And, but now I'm, I'm back worried about my neighborhood, especially the area where Busey meets Washington Street in Urbana, where there is, appears to be a progression towards degradation of that neighborhood, formation of, or renting of homes to students, which is not really the problem. I enjoy students, I work with students every day at my job at the university. But what I've found is that in this town, investors can purchase homes and rent them to students and not really put any money into the homes. The homes are allowed to degrade, and with that degradation is the degradation of the whole neighborhood. And the example I cited was Main Street near the university, also Elm and Green Streets, I think, are also subject to the same thing. And I don't want to see the same thing happen to my neighborhood. So I have a general issue with the instincts of the, of the city towards preservation of neighborhoods, and I have a particular problem tonight, learning just yesterday of the imminent demolition of 806 West Iowa, which is very appalling to me. It seems totally in line with all the other negative things I see in terms of degradation of neighborhoods in this, in this city. And I'm going to protest that by being here tonight and speaking. I realize it's pretty late in the game. I guess the permit has been issued, and it's going to be torn down tomorrow. But as a long-term Urbana resident, I'm very alarmed, I'm very upset, and actually, with the current trajectory of the neighborhoods where I live, I will do everything I can to make sure that none of you are reelected in the coming election. With all my personal finances and all my contacts, I will try to make certain that there's as much turnover in the Urbana government as possible. That's what I, that's my statement.
Any questions? All right, thank you. And back to council member petitions and communications. Any further council member petition? Yes, Mr. Hayes.
I heard through the grapevine that Ms. Wyman passed a bar exam, so I think we need to give her that.
I do have a proclamation to read this evening, encouraging people to walk to school. It reads, "Whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in the rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily, into daily routines. And whereas, community leaders and parents can determine the walkability of their community by using a walkability checklist, and whereas, children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities, now therefore I, Todd Satterthwaite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby proclaim October sixth, two thousand and four, as International Walk to School Day, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day." And is Ravina Khan here?
Yes.
Yes, Ravina, take the proclamation.
Yes.
Bye.
Walk to School Day is, as Mayor Satterthwaite said, October sixth, this Wednesday, and there are a few schools in both Champaign and Urbana that would be participating, and Todd Satterthwaite's actually going to be walking with some of the schoolchildren at Prairie School on Wednesday. So if you have kids that are walking to school, take the walkability checklist and walk with them. And this is a, in sponsorship with the Safe Kids Coalition of Champaign County, and the MTD, and several other agencies in the community, sponsoring agencies in the community, so.
Okay, well, thanks for spearheading that for us.
Thank you.
Well, we'll get to the reports of standing committees, since there's no old business. We have the report from the Committee of the Whole. Let's see, I guess, Ms. Chenoweth is chair, is that right?
It's right to Ms. Chenoweth.
Ms. Chenoweth, so Ms. Huth, do you want to give the report?
Sure. First item from the Committee of the Whole is ordinance number two thousand and four dash zero nine dash one three three, and ordinance amending Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash seven, scheduled fees, taxi cabs and limousines, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five eyes. Ms. Huth?
Next up, we have ordinance number two thousand and four dash zero nine dash one three one, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Route one thirty, High Cross Road Corridor Study, I so move.
Second.
A motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with six eyes.
We have a question for Ms. Pat.
Pardon?
Thank you, Mayor. The clerk informs me that we need to vote again on the ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, because she failed to call your name and your vote is required. Did she call?
No.
Right, didn't I?
No.
Well, do we need to reconsider the whole thing then?
No. Just the roll call.
Just the roll call, okay. Then I need to, if we can go back to the roll call for item B under the Committee of the Whole report, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the Route one thirty High Cross Road Corridor Study. Ms. Clark?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Yes, and that passes with six eyes.
There is no further business in the Committee of the Whole. The next meeting will be Monday, October eleventh, at seven thirty at four hundred South Line.
Oh, Ms. Huth?
Letter C has been deleted. We're on to letter D. Ordinance number two thousand and four dash zero nine dash one two nine, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a parking meter zone on certain streets, Elm Street, I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with five eyes. Ms. Huth?
Next up is ordinance number two thousand and four dash zero nine dash one three zero, and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section twenty-three dash one eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Elm Street, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five eyes. Ms. Huth?
The last item is ordinance number two thousand and four dash zero nine dash one three two, and ordinance approving and adopting a supplement and amendment to the redevelopment plan and related redevelopment projects for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area, I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with five eyes. Ms. Huth? Okay, thank you. Next is reports of officers. We have a few reports. Mr. Walton, did you want to start, or Mr. Rex?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. We have several reports tonight, a couple economic development reports, and Rex, if you want to go ahead and go. And a report from the fire chief on Fire Prevention Week. And while he's taking his seat, I do have one piece of news I would like to share with you, and that is, last week, our Public Works crews, two of our crews took place in the annual snow rodeo in Galesburg. This is an event where communities test their snow plowing skills against other communities. It's quite an art, actually, to avoid hitting cars and scraping up yards and handle the complexities of these very large pieces of equipment. And last Friday, we had two crews participate with thirty-one others in the state from twenty-five other cities, and I'm pleased to report that Urbana Arbor Division crew of Brad Drew and Andy Murphy took first place. And second place was our Operations Division from Urbana, Doug Logue and John Collins. So out of twenty-five cities and thirty-one crews, we took first and second place, so congratulations for those. Rex, to you.
Thank you. Evening, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members. As Bruce mentioned, this is Fire Prevention Week for two thousand and four. The theme this year, while may not seem very creative, it says, "Test Your Smoke Alarm." And as I said, that does not seem very creative, but the issue is, is that it's very concerning for us in the fire service, as the death rate in our country continues to remain around four thousand people every year. This number's been flat for nearly ten years. It dramatically dropped a number of years ago when smoke detectors were first brought out on the market, but it is now stabilized, and it's not getting any better. And so this is the theme this year, and we want to make sure everyone keeps that in mind. Having said, I'd like to encourage all the citizens of Urbana to do two things this week if they would. One, check your smoke detectors. If you find the batteries over a year old, please change them. They cannot be relied on beyond one year in a smoke detector. Smoke detectors continue to be your number one primary defense in the event of a fire in your home. Two, we'd like everyone to take a moment, spend some time reviewing their fire exit plans in their home, and practice with the family or other members of the household. That's crucial, because if you do not practice that, it does not work that effective in a moment of emergency. Now for the good side. All this week, at Lincoln Square Mall, our fire personnel again are putting on displays, exhibits, and our programs for the young children of our community. It's well-attended, in fact, we are maxing out this year that we may very well be hitting nearly two thousand children. We're somewhere around fifteen hundred for sure now, and this in itself is about almost a fifty percent increase. Thursday evening is our sixth annual Family Night at Lincoln Square Mall. Again, it's a family night where we invite the families to bring the children and spend some time, and hopefully we can encourage them to get involved with helping to help the children understand the principles of fire safety. And if you haven't heard, firefighter Phil Edwards is wrapped to stop, drop, and roll. You've missed something. So please stop by. It is in itself an experience. You just might get lucky. We do have door prizes, courtesy of local merchants. And finally, with the courtesy of Papa John's and Coke, we have refreshments. I remind you, there'll be a lot of children, so you have to get in line very quickly for the pizza. So again, it's Fire Prevention Week. Please check things home at home, at home, and it's Family Night at Lincoln Square Mall from six to eight p.m. Thank you.
Okay. Hayes, do you have a question?
Yeah, you know, every once in a while, people watch Emerald on TV, right, and they like to cook. And sometimes the smoke alarm goes off.
Yes.
Now, what kind of suggestions do you have to, to quiet that smoke alarm down once it starts going off?
Well, one, like you think most of us do, is you take a piece of paper and you fan it, and I'm very sorry if that's what you do, just fan it. The answer is, if you buy a newer generation smoke detector, today, the smoke detectors are much more sophisticated. We do recommend a new style that's on the market today. It's a dual sensor, because there basically are two types of fire. One is what you're, you're talking about, when we all open the oven, and the heat from our pizza cooking in the oven sets off a smoke detector. That's the most prevalent used smoke detector on the market today. And it's an ionization one, it just senses the heat. Again, if you just wave the heat past the smoke detector, the alarm will shut down pretty fairly quickly. The newer generations, you can actually silence them during those moments, but they will reactivate in the event of a real fire. So you can, you can work past that problem today.
Any other questions or comments for the chief in Fire Prevention Week?
Thank you.
John, did you have a report?
Yeah, we have the monthly economic, economic development activities report. Just to go over some of the highlights of that with you. Primarily, our business retention visits are in the Philo Road Business District to get input from those businesses as to the development that could occur there. Of course, we are working with the developers on the Stratford site, which the council approved the agreement for. Several housing developments are underway and planned, including Prairie Winds Development, which you've approved a revised PUD, and of course, you've approved Savannah Greens Face subdivision. Also, of course, Aldis has submitted a special use permit for its proposed location at the intersection of one fifty and one thirty. Some other highlights, under building permits, one hundred and forty-one permits have been issued this year under builder Bana, and that brings us to one hundred and seventy-one total new permits for this year. Some important meetings that we routinely hold. Some other highlights, under building permits, one hundred and forty-one permits have been issued this year under Build Urbana, and that brings us to one hundred and seventy-one total new permits for this year. Some important meetings that we routinely hold with our neighborhood business groups, we've held a meeting, of course, on the Philo Road Business District, as well as in North Cunningham Avenue Business District. And the planning team has participated quite heavily in the Long Range Transportation Steering Committee with the Highway one thirty High Cross Corridor Study. And of course, we continue to work with CVB and EDC, submitting two prospect responses to them, as well as working with the new manager for the UVA, and familiarizing her with city activities. At this point, I have an update on the Philo Road Action Plan, if there's nobody else that has something to need.
Questions on the ED plan? Okay, well, go ahead, then.
Okay. Earlier this year, we submitted to you a report on the economic conditions in the Philo Road Business District, and we're going to give you an update today. There have been activities undertaken in pursuit of fulfillment of a Philo Road Action Plan, and that, while that report has not been finally drafted and submitted to you yet, action being the better part of valor on this, we decided to take some actions, and I'll go over some of those with you right now.
John, if you can grab that microphone there, at the desk there while you're talking, that'd be great, so it broadcasts your presentation. You can't go too far with that thing, so.
No, I can't do my Bob Barker imitation. Well, some of the activities that have undergone right now, we can't stress too much with the normal improvements that go on in the city. Road construction is now occurring on Colorado Avenue, and that's going to help link the Philo Business District to some of the rapid-growing areas in the community. And improvements are also planned on Philo Road, which include three-lane reconstruction of Philo Road between Colorado Avenue and Mumford Drive, and that will also include a signalized intersection at Philo Road and Colorado Avenue. And that's important, because that will be a great improvement to the appearance of the area, as well as the convenience of traffic. Also, we have produced a Philo Road Business Directory, and you have some of those in your packet here tonight. We have some of those posted here on our board, and Kathy Larson and Nadi Baker have worked very hard in developing these materials for marketing purposes that we have on display here this evening. And that's also including improved directional and welcome signs for the area, and they'll be strategically placed along Windsor, Cottage Grove, Philo Road, and Florida avenues. And that will direct visitors and customers to the business district, and also provide more inviting appearance to them as well. In pursuance of that same goal, we are going to be installing banners, welcome banners in the Philo Road Business District, up and down Philo Road, similar to what we have on Main Street. And of course, that'll, again, that'll dress up the appearance of the area and provide a more welcoming atmosphere. Some of the other things we've gotten accomplished, we have gotten a sign erected on the Marathon Site that is announcing upcoming development there, so people know that that project is being renovated. Right now, they are going through the Phase One Examination, environmental examination on the site. We are conducting meetings with developers in the area, commercial developers, to find out what kind of projects they think would work best in the area, as well as conducting retention visits with the business owners, as we cited in the Economic Development Report, to get more input as to the types of businesses that they would like to see in the area. We've actually held two meetings with the Southeast Urbana Business, or Neighborhood Business Group, to get their input and involve them in the process, and we will closely coordinate with them as we go about implementing the Philo Road Action Plan. Any questions?
Questions about this? Okay, well, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Let me shake you up a little.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't have to do with Philo Road. Seems like they're doing quite a bit of construction out there on Lot Lincoln and Bradley. How's that project coming?
Lot Lincoln and Bradley? I guess I would refer to Rob. He's been the primary director on that. They're starting construction on the development. They subdivided the lot, they had to extend a sewer from the south, and they had originally planned an opening. Of course, that's a convenience store, gas station, and I think it's going to be a Quiznos in there also. They wanted to be open by Labor Day a couple months ago, or a month ago. But they'll be starting construction on the building in the next few weeks.
Other questions about economic development, or the Philo Road Plan? Walton?
Just one other item on Philo Road. We have been reviewing the area Business District Redevelopment Incentive Program that we put together a year ago or so. It hasn't been as effective as what we would hope for, so I think probably by next committee meeting, we're going to bring back some proposed revisions for you to consider. That wouldn't have any budgetary impact, but will have an impact on who would be eligible for such loans and grants. So hopefully, we'll have that next committee meeting.
Okay, yes.
One final item. Let me point it out that we have posted our survey for the residents, or the shopper's survey, as we call it sometimes, and people can go on the website for the city and fill out that survey and submit it. And you don't have to be from the Southeast Urbana neighborhood areas, you can be from anywhere within Urbana or in the region and fill that out, and we've had over four hundred of those submitted so far. So we've had a really good response on that, but we are certainly looking for more, and the deadline on that is October fifteenth. And if you prefer, we can send you a hard copy if you call the office and request that, and that information will be online as well as just by calling the offices in general.
Okay. If there's no other reports of officers, we'll move on to new business. I have a couple items on our new business. First is an ordinance annexing certain territory to the City of Urbana. This is twenty-two oh nine North Willow Road, Pega, this is a hard name.
Hernak.
Hernak, and Ivana.
Bootleak.
Bootleak. Thank you for the assist there.
All right. This is really just executing an agreement that the council passed on July nineteenth. You passed an annexation agreement for twenty-two oh nine North Willow, that's the northwest corner of Willow and Anthony Drive, and this would simply annex the property in accordance with that agreement, and it would be effective starting tomorrow.
Move approval? We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five eyes. Welcome to the City of Urbana. And finally, this evening, we have an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a ten-foot, sixty-six percent encroachment into the required fifteen-foot front yard setback at seven oh three North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana's B three General Business Zoning District. This was case number ZBA zero four dash MAJ dash twelve. Yes, Paul?
This was a request for a major variance filed by Isaac and Seaton Properties. They're requesting a major variance to, on their lot at the northwest corner of the intersection of Cunningham Avenue and Crystal Lake Drive. This corner location has two street frontages, and so has two front yard requirements. One faces east of Cunningham Avenue, and one south onto Crystal Lake Drive. The petitioner wishes to erect a sign with a ten-foot encroachment into the fifteen-foot front yard setback on the south-facing street frontage at Crystal Lake Drive. On September fifteenth, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to recommend approval. This location is an arterial corridor in Urbana. The corridor contains a mix of uses, including some auto repair shops, fast food restaurants, and other business developments. It's got a couple of single-family homes to the west, and east across Cunningham Avenue are the maintenance offices of a cemetery. The zoning ordinance states that lots with frontages on more than one street shall have required front yards in each, shall have required front yards in each street-facing frontage. And in the B three General Business Zone, these front yards would be fifteen feet in depth. In this particular lot, accommodating the fifteen-foot requirement for both the front yards would result in the location of the sign that would be well within the existing parking lot and the vehicle display area. What that would do, basically, to the layout on that lot was, would exacerbate problems that they've already have in fitting enough parking and space onto the lot. So allowing the sign to encroach ten feet into the fifteen front yard setback along Crystal Lake Drive, it would result in a sign location that's visible both to the north and the south, and without compromising access on that particular lot. Council has the options to grant the variance, grant the various variance subject to terms and conditions, or to deny the variance request. The Zoning Board of Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval, and staff concurs with the ZBA and recommends that the City Council grant the variance in ZBA case oh four MAJ twelve.
Okay, any questions? If not, a motion would be ordered.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion of second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five eyes, and there being no further visits to come before us this evening, we stand adjourned.